Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your attendance at this regularly scheduled city council meeting for the City of Vader. Appreciate the attendance of the three of our elected city council members. We will officially call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. We acknowledge the absence of Jill Nielsen, our City clerk, but are grateful for Diane Lloyd filling in for absence. So with that, let's proceed with the roll call.
Okay, Mayor Smith.
Present.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Ruth Creer.
Present.
Jason News.
Here.
Excellent. Well, we have a quorum, at least. We should call the other names that would be too absent so that we can handle their absences.
Joe Schein.
He is excused. It was indicated that he would be missing tonight.
And Judy Costello.
And she is also excused, and we'll get into that later. So with that, let's proceed with our pledge of allegiance. We invite all present to the line. And Mrs. Creer, would you lead us in that?
Oh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll proceed now with the mayor's report. First item is an update for the council on the Fourth of July planning. And I suspect that you've discerned from our previous reports that there have been a number of issues that we have been addressing in the run-up to the July Fourth celebration. Since our last city council meeting, I can report to you that there's been some progress made on some of the more critical issues that were confronted. But there are some of the issues that are creating some challenges, and that's probably going to require some council action this evening. So we may, before and through, want to make an adjustment to our agenda. But here's what I can share with you. Because the city is embracing, in totality, the elements associated with the fireworks display. With each year that passes, we have now come to a full embracing of the responsibilities associated with it, which means that we have done, with, in association with our city attorney, Jenny Robertson, a full analysis of what legal responsibilities a community has when you sponsor fireworks display. First and foremost, the individual who engages in the fireworks, in this case Reggie Smith, is required to have state certification license to do it. And as it turns out, he has not had sufficient licensing to engage in that activity. He's done it, but without the full coverage. And so where the city can't do that, he has to do it himself, and it's proving problematic. And so we have to overcome that for one of the, not to mention the fact that the city has purchased $2,500 worth of fireworks. And state law, when a community purchases such materials, there are strict guidelines with regard to their storage. And Reggie has constructed a facility in which it's being stored, but it is not up to state law. And so that's a problem as well. And for a community to engage in that activity, we have to have insurance, given all the particulars and the parameters, regardless of whether or not they're just Class C fireworks. And we've had insurance that's covered the event in years past, but not the fireworks. This year, we're being informed that if we want to do it, that we are going to have to get appropriate insurance. And there's only one insurance company that may do it. They haven't promised us that they would, but they told us that if the city could come up with about $1,800 for one day, they might be able to find a provider who would cover us for that 24-hour period. So you might want to write that $1,800 figure down, because ultimately, it, we have contacted the company that has sold us the fireworks. They can't and won't store the fireworks for us until the evening of the event. Reggie would need to have access to those fireworks in order to set them up in any case. So, but he has them, and he's got them in the facility that he felt was safe enough in years past. It's much safer than it's been before, but it's still not in compliance with state law. Quite by state law, I mean, probably not so much a law as code regulations. So, but the third issue that's going to be coming up on item two on our agenda deals with the three properties on which the event has taken place in years past. You will note on the map that you have in front of you, there are actually four, but all of those are owned by separate individuals. In years past, we've just done it on their property, but that's not appropriate and exposes them to a potential liability. We've been in contact with other professional fireworks presenters, and they do this for a living, and they're frankly startled that we have engaged in this in years past with such amateur approach to things, because in their experience, all it would take would be to have one firework go off, and this has happened today. At one instance, fireworks fell on a blanket, burned a hole in that blanket, and it cost $500 to replace the blanket. A spark could land on somebody's clothing, or in their hair, or cause a burn on somebody, and that would expose the city to liability. But not only just the city, but the property, the landlord on whom the person was watching during. So Jenny Robertson suggests that that may be one of the more straightforward issues that we could deal with, because normally in those situations, it's a simple lease. And she's prepared the contract for extension to those property owners, in which we would lease that property for 24 hours each year during that event for $1 per year. It's not uncommon. It's a simple-use contract in which we would lease it. And most property owners, when they're made of profit speed on the situation, are cooperative. So she's pretty confident that if we were to pass that resolution, remember, as you will note on item two, we could set that in motion and probably get it done before July Fourth. So the last thing I'd note for your information is we're reaching out, like I said, to the company that sold us the fireworks. They have a lot of contacts. They're going to see if they could find somebody who might be willing, who's certified, to oversee the event with Reggie's involvement. It's a long shot, but they said that they would reach out, and we haven't gotten a word back from them yet, but this was out of yesterday. So we could resolve most of these issues if the city is willing to expend $1,800 to approach this insurance broker who thinks they might have somebody who would insure it for that event.
Did Jill follow people down in Longview for the last time with Jill?
Yes, she's called them.
And also down in Long Beach.
She's called all the major fireworks manufacturers and other communities who put them on for a living. And so all of this is a distillation of that effort, and Jill has expended a lot of time, knowing.
I understand that Jill talked to someone here in town that had a certification and wouldn't even touch it because of the fact that you don't know where the, how they've been stored, or how they've been changed.
Right, yeah, this is important. Thank you for mentioning that, yeah. If they don't know the history, can trace it back to its origins, they won't touch the fireworks. It's too risky. So, yeah, this is a whole new learning curve involved with.
I talked to quite a few people down in Long Beach, how to shoot fireworks go off, because I wasn't going to do it anymore for them.
Yeah.
And I don't know if she contacted or not.
Well, I suspect she has, given circulation's gone into it now. You had to.
I was just going to say, for point of clarification, the reason that we are looking for a certified operator, licensed operator, is that they carry their own fireworks insurance, and we would not have to pay for the riders that we're talking about. We would only pay for the event insurance.
Which is our own insurance. Okay, we have possible comments from the idea?
Yes.
A question.
Question.
It's mid-June, and we're just finding this out. Weren't you going to take over after last year? And now all of a sudden, it's June, and we're just finding all this out?
Well, I compacted all of this, been on the table for over a month, month and a half, I would say. But I could answer that question more in depth, but it would have some impact on the individual who's done it for the community in the past, and that's Reggie Smith. And so it's a little more complicated than what I've shared, but in this open public meeting, I think there's discretion, and so I'm being discreet even in answering the question. But, so, back to realities at hand, I think the community and the city council is something of a bind. Not to mention the fact that we've purchased banners announcing their use for every year, but, and the materials that were going to be distributed to those in attendance. So we have those. And the committee has got the program all lined out, and everything's ready to go.
Well, myself, I would like to see at least this year for the community, this community event this year. We're going to work on it for next year, but find a certified operator before it gets too late.
If we don't, oh, you note that map, there's a reason why you've got that. I think you're aware of it, that the regulations require that there be 140 feet between the fireworks and any building, and that circle represents 140 feet. And our plan this year is-
Well, here, according to this, I was looking at, they have to shoot it off at Weirden Park, because if you move it this way, then you're going to be over to the post office.
Yeah, no, you hit that building right there.
There's nothing there.
Our mind was to shoot them off in the street so we could eliminate these three property owners. But if you move it onto the street, then you hit the Assembly of God church and this property. So this is the-
The ditch.
The ditch, is the primary zone. And even if there's people seated on there, we need to get the approval of the property owners.
Because there's a post office, and that's the only actually thing that we're really going to watch out for. I used to put a ladder there and have a fire hose.
Yeah, well, indeed.
Well, I pretended for myself and keep it safe.
You were just lucky, because, I mean, your house, you can't use this field, because your house and these others would fall within that 140-foot. So this has been going on for a number of years. Now we're embracing reality, even if it is June 23rd. So I guess the question is, do the council, if we're determined to have the show, the show must go on, you want us to identify $1,800 from the general fund and earmark it. It can be done for the celebration.
Would we have $1,800?
Yeah, there's usually that amount of wiggle room in the budget.
Well, if we have the $1,800 for this year only, either make a motion that we spend the $1,800 and get the community involved with us for the following years, because we need community events to keep things, keep the city moving.
Okay, well, and you hold that thought, because if we're going to have submitted a motion, this is just the mayor's report, I would recommend that we insert it as item three on the official agenda for tonight's meeting. Okay, but we'll-
I think it's item two, the resolution.
Yeah, we could include it under that, yeah. But let's do that when we get down to the agenda approval. Okay, there, with that, let me proceed with the report about the public hearing. Just a reminder, you should already be aware that July 14th at 6:00 PM, which should be at the beginning of the city council meeting, there'll be a public hearing as a wrap-up report for the side sewer project. Should take more than five or 10 minutes, but I wanted to ensure that you knew that that was still coming. It didn't get printed, but I wanted to obviously remind you of what's obviously happening. The chip seal project has begun today. All the residents were notified that it was going to happen with a notice on their doors. We didn't know until three days ago that it was going to happen starting today, but it's begun, and-
Is it over on Sixth?
It's on several locations, Main Street, B Street, Eighth Street, Ninth Street are going to get some chip sealing, and so forth and so on. But you should have the maps of that. Okay, and I'm not sure how long it's going to last, but it's a positive for this community, and it's the largest paving project that we have, and you're aware, which has been following a while. And that doesn't include that it's not paving, it's chip sealing, but these streets can take that, and it should extend the life of them, too. And just as a matter of public information, we will still be extending the paving of the street funds before the summary's out as well. Okay, with that, the last issue, which you may or may not be aware, but I did receive an official letter from Judy Costello, and she's asked me to read this letter to you to make it a matter of public record. It reads as follows, "Mayor Ken Smith and fellow council members, please accept this letter as formal notification as I am resigning my position on the Vader City Council effective June 12, 2016. This is a decision I have thought about and feel it is in the best interest of the city to replace me. At this time, I believe there are many qualified community members that would make outstanding city leaders. I have faith that our current council will select someone who will bring positive energy to that position. I so appreciate the members of the council, Jason, Ruth, Andy, and Joe, for all that they do for our community, and I will continue to support them and the community in all their future efforts. Respectfully, Judy Costello." So I talked to her personally on the phone, and as you probably know, that as soon as a person audibly expresses that, the termination is immediate. So I've accepted her resignation, and will provide a letter which is required, authenticating and certifying her decision. So it is already in effect, and of course, she's going to be in Georgia for the next five months anyway. So here we sit, but I would suggest that we insert that as an agenda item as well when we come to the agenda approval. So it's a startling turn of events, but it's our current reality, so, and it is, well, we'll get in more details when we get to it later. So with that, let's, let me also, well, I'll hold on to this, let's go to the council reports. Anything, reports you'd like to bring up or share at this moment in time?
Are you going to bring up these letters that we give to the council?
Oh, yeah, and that was just brought for your information. There's really no action the council needs to address. We get letters like that regularly, but the only reason why we provided them to you is that you get a sense of feelings that are amongst your constituents or elected officials.
Is there going to be any action that can win this one?
Which one is that one? Oh, yes, absolutely.
Because I drove by there, and it's not quite there.
Well, let me make a mayor's report on that, because that's an excellent question. I'm pleased to report, and you may be aware, that Ron Kemp, our city inspector slash engineer, has, we've got all of our ordinances in place, Jennifer Robertson has been waiting for Ron Kemp's specific zone code violations, and since, and we had that ready by the 26th. So his job was to simply provide to us the specific code violations that falls under. And so the 25th came and went, and we didn't get a letter. So Jill called him, had no response. A week and a half went by, so I called his boss, that's Les Townsend, and informed him that where was this information, we're waiting for it, so we can set in motion our ordinances. We're going after the landlords. He was startled that Ron had not submitted that, so he called him, and 30 minutes later, I got a call. So I told him he had to present that, provide that to us by Friday of last week. Friday came and went, he didn't provide it. So Monday, I called Ron again and told him this was not acceptable, and I won't go into any further details, but by Tuesday morning, we had it. So we have all the information. It's already, there are 10 properties, that five were specifically targeted, but he's added five more now, and those are-
On the street.
And I can give you a full list of them. But Jennifer has that information now. She was out of town today, but she'll be in tomorrow, so she is going to formally initiate, and you can read the letters that we have with their verbiage on it. And it's stiff penalties. It's according to the ordinances that the City of Vader has in place. So to answer your question, that is what is happening. And we have finally, I can sit here as the mayor of Vader after nine years, through determined, unceasing efforts, have in place ordinances that are defensible in court with teeth that will force these deadbeat property owners and landlords to clean up those messes. And they're carrying the cage, if you want to watch, of that house across the street from the fire station. And all of the public who are listening, if you want to see if we're getting somebody done to watch that vehicle and that garbage pile, when it's gone, you know it isn't because somebody decided to steal it. It's because somebody was forced to clean it up, as well as these other property. So there, that's a thank you, Ruth, for allowing me to share that with you. Yes.
But I don't know if I'm out of order or not, but why can't we, we have an official letter from Mrs. Costello as she's resigned?
Oh, you will.
Huh?
You will, yeah. You're getting an official letter. It's required. I just got it, so I'm going to prepare it. You'll have it by-
Well, why can't we take and appoint one to take her place?
Oh, you will, yeah. Well, I was going to talk about it when we get to the agenda.
Oh, okay, fine. I just wanted to know.
Yeah, you know, we'll go over here.
Number three.
We added the activity.
Yeah, we'll add it when we get to the agenda approval. Okay, so there, that concludes my reports. Any other council reports that come? All righty, then let's proceed with special reports. I don't, I'm not aware of any park board, or there's no sheriff's department report scheduled for this evening. So let's now proceed with our agenda approval. This will be our official agenda for tonight's meeting, June 23rd. We've already decided that we will add a discussion on the, in addition to Resolution 10, 2016, to consider, well, it has to be a motion from a member of the council, $1,800. Mr. Wilson?
Okay.
Oh, Dave.
What, not in the wrong way.
To add it to the agenda, right?
Yeah, but he has made it, yeah, officially.
We're waiting. Can you take that off as well?
Unless somebody else wants to jump in and submit a motion.
I motion that we add the cost of $1,800 for the insurance for the Fourth of July to the agenda on city business number two.
Okay, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Daley to submit, or to engage in council discussion regarding allocating $1,800 to the issues-
I second it.
Fourth of July budget on item number, seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, a motion is carried. Did you catch that, Dave? Okay, now, obviously, we were going to engage in a formal discussion regarding Judy Costello's, but we need a motion for that.
I make a motion that we add Judy Costello to the agenda for her resignation from the Vader City Council effective-
Item number three. Agenda item number three.
Yeah, item number three.
Okay, all right. The motion is submitted by Mr. Wilson to add council discussion on the vacancy incurred by Judy Costello's resignation.
I'll second it.
Okay, it was seconded by Mrs. Creer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I'm most curious. Okay, I don't have any other, oh, it would be appropriate now, at this time, to inform- Okay, I don't have any other, oh, it would be appropriate now, at this time, to inform council members that at 10 minutes, actually, it's about eight minutes to six, we reached the grand conclusion that, as you are probably aware, if you haven't noticed, Kathy Reed and Greg Zentner are not going to be present with us this evening for their presentation, and for reasons that I would like to share with the council when we get to that item. So, so, I wouldn't change the, no, I wouldn't change it. Let's just keep item number one.
Okay.
Because I'll explain why, and that pertains to the topic. So, yeah, let's just, sorry.
Motion to approve it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda for 6/23/2016.
Okay, as amended.
As amended.
All right, Mr. Daly submitted a motion to approve the agenda for today's date, as amended, and we have seconded.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there none? Motion carries. Right now, let's jump to the approval of the minutes from our last city council meeting on June 9th. Do we have a chance to leave here?
I'll make a motion that we accept the council meeting minutes from June 9th, 2016.
Okay, as written?
As written.
Okay. Mr. Daly, you submitted an official motion for council to consider to approve the city council minutes for the June 9th meeting, as written. Do we have a second for that motion? Okay. It was motioned, seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Do we raise council action?
I can make a motion.
You have to feel free.
I make a motion for the voucher approval for the end of June 2016 in an amount of ten thousand fifteen dollars and forty-one cents. And June of 2016 total would be thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Okay. Mr. Wilson submitted a motion to approve those voucher totals, as read. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None? Motion is approved. Now, we'll proceed to public comment. So, do we have a-
It's empty, but I'm not gonna sign up. I'm just curious about-
Well, if there's no signups, then there needs to be.
Is my name on the phone?
Yeah, go ahead. We would love to recognize you.
My name is-
No, a social security number, a credit card.
I'm, I was just curious-
State your name, and you gotta record it for the-
Godros, friend, neighbor. And I was just curious how we were coming along with that stop sign at the, in the government, coming up every meeting. And I know we just have a new family that moved in two doors down from me, across from Jason, that have small children. I know that's the neighbor on the corner, down the road from Jason, that's already filled with fun particular vehicle driving past the area. And it's getting quite problematic in that section there. So, I don't know. I know we're looking for stop signs.
I, I got a stop sign, like I said, the last time, got it cleaned up very nicely. I don't know, we're still looking for another. I haven't re, I haven't given it to the city shop yet, but, so I know-
We're likely to locate another one also.
Yeah, we're just looking for-
The officer that was here last time said he was gonna check into, yeah, do you know anything about Anne?
Do you want me to fill in this part?
Yes.
First of all, you need to return that stop sign to the county.
No, I don't worry, David.
I'm just kidding about that. Sergeant Cheeseman did tell me that, he spoke to the road department guy, they recycle all the signs when they have an old sign. Apparently, there's a question about an old sign to get cleaned up, they recycle them. But the, the area shop guy was supposed to get ahold of Jill. His question was, did the county guy get ahold of the city?
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, they have not.
Okay, so, they, they did say that they would work out something where they could get a sign to the city and reduce costs or whatever, but they don't keep old signs, they recycle them, so that must have been part of the question as far as getting the old signs.
I know there's been inquiries made of Jill about what kind of signs she needed to get, that kind of thing.
They have to be a certain reflective and all that sort of stuff.
I, yeah. So, I will pass on to Sergeant Cheeseman, that you're not aware, that the road department guy was stuck and ahold of Jill, and then, I'm sure you will contact him again.
Thank you.
But they did say they could get you a stop sign to reduce prices.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. So, Jason, you'll keep Jill apprised of the project? Yeah? Well, with that, then, without further ado, let's proceed with our city business. Item number one was to have been council discussion on our waste treatment facility plan update options, and which, simply put, was gonna be a presentation by Kathy Reed, Greg Zentner, and we would have had Chris Kelsey with BHC, engineer, but he's in the state of Maine right now, and so discovered that he wouldn't be present for this meeting, so he has invited his partner, Tom Geis, to have been present telephonically. But at about four o'clock, when it became evident that we were going to have three council members, and, but the principal reason why they're not here is because, you recall in our last meeting, we were going to extend investigative efforts to other companies that might provide a cheaper and yet acceptable alternative. And so, we did that. I did that. And it was the only company that we've had a previous interaction with that had a viable solution, was the Blue Array. That turned out to be the colossal, but timely experimented in cost of city and money. But it was the oddly named Blue Frog option. So, I reached out to the company representative, and as soon as he heard and listened to the situation that we were in, he jumped at the opportunity. So, he's very confident that when he comes and assesses our situation, that he's going to be able to put together a package that might respond to, if there's no penalty for, the, that would cover some of the requirements of our system, at a lower cost than what our current estimates are. All of that is lip flapping, gum flapping, it's just words. But he's gonna be in town next week, and I'm gonna be meeting with him, and Kathy Reed and Greg Zentner are asked to be present. Now, I haven't asked him if he's okay with them being present, but I'm quite confident that he'll say it's fine. When we've had that meeting, then, he's already set in motion a presentation to the city council on July 30th. It was not a evening of a city council meeting, but it's, would be, have to be in the form of a workshop. But that's the only date that he could get his company representatives here. Let me just confirm that date. No, let me make sure, it's the, I'm sorry, it's the 28th, the Thursday. We haven't set a time for it, but it would likely be in the evening. So, when all of that became evident to Greg and Kathy, they immediately thought that it would be wiser to defer this conversation, particularly since Tom Geis has not really been pushed back in, and then to, to missing council members, they thought it would be counterproductive. So, that's why at eight minutes till, we decided that we would not have that council discussion. And so, there you have it. I don't have anything further to add, this is just part of the ongoing, I said, but what I will, the last comment I would make here is that I am convinced that we need to move forward as council. There are some in the community who think it would be wise to not move forward, and just to stall, and DOE has given us a two-year grace period to explore our options, but this letter that has been prepared for you, it's pretty concise, insistent depiction of it that's been prepared for you, and if you read it, it'll leap frogs over a lot of the heavy lifting that's gone on behind it. But the last paragraph, I think, is, or-
Number three.
Yeah, on the, the fiscal consideration and the options. I think that it captures some important essence for you. The main thing being that we could probably lose the $900,000 design fund, because that expires in the end of 2017, if that's an exception, I think that's what it is. Plus, it could jeopardize our ability to get our drinking water system back. We have to show our competency in maintaining our investment system. So, there you have it. But I think we need to embrace the reality that if the Blue Frog option turns out to be just a pie in the sky, then we are, then our banks are generally to the wall. So, I would have all of your fingers and toes crossed for the presentation on the 28th of July.
Will we be getting a, to know when the workshop is?
Yeah, we'll definitely, five or six weeks away from that. All right, well, then, with that, I'm suggesting with item number two, which I know we were going to have two items now, consider Resolution 10-2016, the use of the private property for which you should have a resolution document, but I think the main talking point was the eighteen hundred dollar issue, if the council wants to submit a motion to try to attempt to identify eighteen hundred dollars from the general revenue fund.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 10-2016, to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with certain property owners for the use of their property during the July 4th celebration, and in addition, the cost of eighteen hundred dollars for our insurance for that time.
All right. Well, I think you can package him like that. It's unorthodox, but I don't think it's illegal. So, you've heard a motion submitted by council member Daly to authorize the mayor and city clerk to try to locate eighteen hundred dollars from the general fund to add to the cost of this year's Fourth of July fare. And in addition, to approve Resolution 10-2016, as was read. Do we have a second for both of those, that motion? Okay, seconded by Mr. Wilson. Do we have any additional commentary at this time with the second?
Ruth just got this.
I did not receive this. Tell us now, I'll get to look at it.
Just to cover us. Oh, you're ready to meet that?
Any additional comments or observations?
I have no comments.
I think it's important to note that this resolution doesn't mean that the property owners are going to accept it.
Right, right.
It's just a vehicle that might enable us to overcome that particular issue. So, if there's no other commentary or concerns, then let's put to vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there none? That motion is carried. Thank you.
I second it.
It's already seconded, we've just approved it. Okay. All right, item number three, conversation about the steps involved in replacing a vacancy created by the resignation of a sitting duly-elected city council member. This happened a number of times, it's not uncommon, it's never timely, but what happens then, as you're probably aware, the city council can consider the names of individuals who meet the criteria, you have to live within the city limits, the city theater, and have been a resident here, a registered voter, and, and for 12 months, a resident. And of course, you can't have had any felonies that would preclude you from participating in such an elected position. So, those are the criteria, and you have 90 days to engage in that process. As long as the council has a quorum of three or more, you can continue to function. But the names come through nomination. When the council decides to engage in that action, then nominations are made, and you put them on a piece of paper, and you just engage in a vote of those in attendance until one emerges with declared majority. That's how it works, it's pretty straightforward.
Well, myself, I would nominate Robert Charlton, the city council, he has a lot of experience in the city.
Well, you should, you could, of course, but the question, I think, in reality, is when you want to engage in that, because you do have one missing city council member. And it isn't something that is necessarily needs to be done on the- And it isn't something that is necessarily needs to be done on the, we haven't even gotten an official letter prepared for it. So, and, but it was council's prerogative, and so I just share that with you. But my experience is that it would be wiser to not rush into such things.
Does the city put it out, put it out?
It isn't standard operating procedure, but some cities do, but it isn't in our city guidelines, it isn't a requirement.
So then, how do we know who's interested in sitting up here? If you don't put it out?
They approach people.
Yeah, you just approach people.
Oh, you don't live in city limits? I just get remarked.
Yeah, usually, it's, word gets out, and or you just talk to people that you respect, who you feel would be able to be responsible, and have the attributes you look for in an elected official, and who might represent the general will of what, as you perceive, your constituency. And so, in times past, we generally will, the council would decide to consider that our next, very next council meeting. And that would be my experienced recommendation for the industry.
Well, I say we postpone it till the next meeting, since Joe's not here to participate in that discussion.
Okay, would you make that in the form of a motion?
I'd make a motion that we postpone it till the next meeting, being that Joe's on it.
Okay. Mrs. Creer submitted a motion to, no, we won't say table, but we will hold this agenda item in abeyance until our, the next most immediate city council meeting, which will be in two weeks. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Then, any other council discussion at this moment in time? Hearing none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? If that motion is carried. All righty, well, with that, believe it or not, we've adopted our agenda items. So thank you, and I will officially declare this council meeting closed at six fifty-five thirty.